Alright, I know I said the last one was the final study guide but I realized I didn't go over the homework assignments so let's begin with problem set one. Question one reads True or false? Critical thinking is only applicable to certain professions. And the answer is false and the reason behind that is it is applicable through out daily life. So you get two points by the way for every true or false and you get two points for the explanation. However, if your true or false is incorrect then you lose all your points. That's just to let you know how this was graded. Next question would be true or false and it is motivated reasoning and confirmation bias are both explicitly about our re- reasoning process. If you watched the previous video you know this is false. And the reason it's false is because technically speaking motivated reasoning is about the reasoning process while confirmation bias is something that we do as a form of behavior something that people do is behavior. It's subconscious in a sense it's ingrained. The way that the answer keywords it is the former by that be- that being motivated sh- reasoning is but the latter meaning confirmation bias about the salience of things in the form of the general behavior to seek out notice accept reject remember or forget them rather than their rational justification. So in a sense you believe confirmation bias because you want to and it's not something you actively do it's subconscious. Number three is another true or false. The only way to get better at critical thinking is by reading more about it. The answer is false and the reason it's false is because critical thinking is a skill therefore practice is how one gets better. Number four true or false an explanation is always an answer to a who or what question and the answer for this one is also false. An explanation is an answer to a how or why question. Simple enough. Five true or false according to the Dunning Kruger effect the more incompetent you are the more knowledgeable you think you are and the answer is false. And the reason being is that according to the results even the competent uh no according to results it is no according to results the competent tend to underestimate their competence. In a sense it's not the more incompetent you are the more you think you know. It's the more competent you are the less you think you know. Which is true the more you learn about something the less you know about it. And now we're getting on to structured paraphrases. So let's get those going number six first uh passages and structured paraphrases first discern whether the passage contains any cause effect and or evidence slash conclusions if yes say which of the pair it contains and if it does do a structure paraphrase of the passage including both structure and the label for each clause if no explain why. So for this one we have the following passage here. The boulder rolled down the chute because Indiana Jones removed the wedge that had kept it in place. In this case we set it up as follows the boulder rolled down the chute and then for the next one we put the bracket is a cause Indiana Jones removed the wedge that had kept it in place simple enough. The next one would be question seven. Gretchen studies all the time so she must be a good student. That's in our that's technically a structure para- something you can turn into a structure paraphrase and it begins like this Gretchen studies all the time open bracket she wants to be a good student that is a conclusion because it uses the must. There if it didn't use the must and instead it had a different word it would also be evidence but it's just conclusion she must be a good student. Alright number eight is the common cold can travel through droplets in the air period. If you come in contact with cold or flu germs your chance of getting sick isn't one hundred percent. The common cold is one of the most common sicknesses worldwide and has no cure to date. This one has no structure okay at all. Meaning and the reason is because these are independent it says assertions but in this case you just say independent claims or statements with no connection to one another. Number nine it is Lucy has a cold so her nose is running and she has a sore throat. Throat awesome. Since her throat is sore she'll probably be s- skipping the week? Oh skipping her singing lessons this week. I'm guessing she picked up her cold from going to the movies last week. Simple enough and this one does have a structured and the structure goes Lucy has a cold bracket this effect uh her nose is running. Another effect well technically I would do the brackets after so it's the she has a sore throat which in this case just having a sore throat is the effect of having a cold. And then from here we do the second section where we start after this and it is she'll probably be skipping her singing lessons this week. Fair enough and what is this well technically speaking first let's get rid of the lesson section. This is a effect and a conclusion. Conclusion. She'll be skipping her singing lessons this week. And then finally we have the final bracket section which is cause and a conclusion. And the reason for that is if you look at this it says she picked up her cold from going to the movies last week. Okay. And that is how you would do it. That was a really long one but you know what that was good okay? That was very good that's how you'll do the structure for this one. And technically this one can go all the way back here. Hmm let's just have it be here for the sake of argument. Alright that's where it'll be set up. And it's last week not last week. And then number ten which is the final one for homework one. Sabine probably voted for Lyle for class president. Alright because she likes his policies and she likes him per- sonali. She probably likes him because they're in the same friend group and if Sabine voted for him I'll bet Maria voted for him too since they tend to think alike. That's a really crazy one but if you pay attention you know this one can definitely be solved as well so it's Sabine probably voted for Lyle for class president and we know that this is a case of cause and something else. She likes his policies. So what does that mean well the cause of her liking her well she voted for someone and the cause that made her vote for him is that she likes his policies but at the same time there's also evidence for why she did it. In addition we can have the following one. She likes him personally so s- so Sabine liking Lyle is a cause for her voting for Lyle. It's also evidence as in if you have evidence that Sabine likes Lyle then possibly Lyle's go- you know that Sabine's going to vote for him. And from here we have an even cooler one. It's that they're in the same friend group. The there has to do with Sabine and Lyle. Sh- uh Sabine liking Lyle personally is a cause is caused by being in the same friend group and it's also evidence. As if you remember we were looking at the other slides how people tap in group bias this is your evidence. And then for the next one we have Maria voted for him too. Now what does that realistically mean well this is an effect of Sabine voting for Lyle. We if we know that Sabine voted for Lyle then we can have reasons to suspect that Maria also voted for Lyle because they tend to vote the same. Well more accurately they tend to think alike. And then the conclusion there's also something you conclude from knowing that Sabine voted for Lyle you can conclude that Maria probably voted because they said earlier they tend to think alike and the cause or something else is they tend to think alike. And from here you can reasonably infer that the reason behind that has to do with the fact that this is a cause and this is evidence. And that was homework one. Let's move on to homework set two fun no I like to think so. Up next we get the answer key once more I'll say five points each three for the correct true or false two for the explanation this is work two. If you get the incorrect TF that you lose all the points need to give some leeway on explanations that's for say how make how it was supposed to grade it so let's begin number one true or false if a passage contains no conclusion indicator words then it definitely does not contain an argument. Okay the answer to this one is that it is false as sometimes passages that contain arguments leave out conclusion indicator words for rhetorical force. Sometimes passages that contain arguments leave the conclusion intact. The next one be true or false again and that is every passage that contains an argument states the conclusion of the argument. False as sometimes passages contain arguments that lead the conclusion implicit. In a sense we have an implicit conclusion in this case three is another TF. Fun very fun indeed. True or false if a passage contains an implicit premise the implicit premise definitely does not need to be included in the schematization of the argument. And the answer to this one is false. We uh our reason we hide it is that we have to conclude it as the implicit premise plays an important part in the argument. Makes sense. Four true or false a premise can be a sub conclusion of multiple sub arguments. And the answer this one finally the first true answer is because a sub conclusion can be supported by multiple arguments. So that's how a premise can be a sub conclusion of multiple sub arguments. And now we get on to schematization. Easy passages and arguments first discern whether the passage contains an argument if it does not contain an argument explain why. Second schematize the argument. Seven point each. If Colonel Mustard put the tablet into the drink and if the tablet was poison then he is responsible for the murder. There was a poison tablet in the drink and Colonel Mustard did put the tablet into the drink. We may conclude that he committed the murder. Alright. Let's look at this and see what we can get. And this one is honestly quite easy. If Colonel Mustard put the tablet into the drink and the tablet was poison then he is responsible for the murder. P two is Colonel Mustard put the tablet into the drink and the tablet was poison so if A then B A therefore Colonel Mustard is responsible for the murder. Therefore B. That was not too bad. But of course these get harder as we keep going that's part of the fun of it all six would be fruits are entities that develop from the fertilized ovary of a flower. So tomatoes must be fruits because they develop from the fertilized ovary of a flower. Fine. P one is if an entry develops from the fertilized ovary of a flower then it is a fruit. Makes sense to me it does. And then premise two will be tomatoes develop from the fertilized ovary of a flower. Therefore the conclusion is tomatoes are fruit. Seven is meteor showers occur when the earth in its orbit around the sun passes through debris left over from the dis- in- integration of comets. And comets are disintegrated when they get too close to the sun. That seems fair enough. However if you pay attention you know this is not an argument neither sentence supports the other sentence. They're just assertions or the word I use is claim. Eight. If you are spending money on luxury items then you are doing something wrong. Why you are spending on why you are spending money on luxury items only if it's in your power to prevent suffering and death from lack of food. Suffering and death from lack of food is bad. And if it's in your power to stop it from happening uh to prevent something bad from happening without making a great sacrifice it's wrong not to do so. And surely you could get by without luxury items. Alright. This is how you'll do it. I'm not going to do the sub argument method I'm going to do the regular method because sub argument method takes way too long. We're doing the regular method. P one if you are spending money on luxury items then it's in your own power to prevent suffering from and death from lack of food. Okay. P two on the other hand is suffering and death from lack of food is bad. Obviously P three would be if it's in your power to prevent something bad without making a great sacrifice it's wrong not to do so. Okay. And P four is you're not spending money on luxury items is not a great sacrifice. This one is implicit to my knowledge. Okay. Therefore the way we would conclude this if we took this argument at its core is if you are spending money on luxury items then you are doing something wrong. Which is fair enough. And then we have a lot more to go but truthfully at this point if we gotta do them all okay we just we gotta do them all. I can't chicken out now. Kenny's favorite kind of cake is lemon cake. I was going to make him one but when I went to the store they were all sold out. They had chocolate cake though thus I settled for chocolate cake. Thus, I settled for chocolate cake instead. So I actually fell for this one. I took the word thus to be an indication of a conclusion, meaning an argument. However, in this statement, the author is just telling us a story, okay? Therefore, not an argument. I fell for this one. I came up with some very contrived method of of schematizing it, but there is none. Ten is that, you know, I'm gonna stop. No, you know, I'm not, I'm not. You gotta keep going. It is an oversimplification to blame all the world's problems on increasing population. Countries with but a small fraction of the world's population consume the bulk of the world's production of minerals, fossil fuels, and so on. This one is an argument, and you schematize it like such. Countries with a small fraction of the world population consume the bulk of the world's problems. The world's production, my bad. Of minerals, fossil fuels, and so on. P two is if the world's problems were primarily a result of the world's increasing population, then the countries with a small fraction of the world's population would not consume the bulk of the world's production of minerals, fossil fuels, and so on. I'm going to give you a bit of advice for your exam. Do not write in shorthand. It is so tempting. But if you want to get points for getting the answer correct, write the full form. It's better to lose points because you got something wrong than to lose points because you didn't write it. It is an oversimplification to blame all of the world's problems on an increasing population. That makes sense to me. The next one is while the roots of Mendelian genetic disorders such as Huntington Huntington's disease and polycystic kidney disease can be traced to a single gene defect. Illnesses such as schizophrenia are likely to spring from many genetic contributions to mental illness. Therefore, will be a far more difficult task. This thing, at first I thought he was just spouting facts from some site, but no. It turns out that this individual is actually making an argument. Here is how to schematize it. So first, we begin with premise one, and that is that the roots of Mendelian genetic disorders can be traced to a single gene defect. Premise two are that the roots of mental disorders cannot be traced to a single gene defect. Premise three is that uncovering the genetic contributions to a disorder that cannot be traced to a single gene defect is much more difficult than uncovering the genetic contributions to a disorder that can be traced to a single gene defect. And now that we have our premises, and I want to point out that the difficulty of this one is that you have to find the implicit premise. This one I got wrong because instead of finding an implicit premise, I created multiple premises based only on text. So if you can spot this one, kudos to you. It's a pretty hard one, but the conclusion here is pretty straightforward. It's that uncovering the genetic contributions to mental disorders will be more difficult than uncovering the genetic contributions to Mendelian disorders. Pretty fair. So we got three more. But honestly, I think you guys know how to schematize an argument at this point. So what I will do is skip to the one that requires a lot of schematization. So either thirteen or fourteen. Let me take a quick look at both. We are going to do fourteen first. We're gonna do fourteen because it is the hardest one, and if you can do fourteen, you can do all of them. Let's do it. Members of all media should refuse to state the names of those engaged in mass murder or terrorist addicts. The Times could have referenced other shootings without naming the perpetrators, but once again, gave them another brief moment of fame. The killer, the public can get the killers' details, even their biographies without having to read their, their names. Well, having to read its name, let's, let's dehumanize it. This kind of restraint would protect the perpetrators. Oh, it is a plural, so read their names. Family members who are usually innocent and therefore also victims. Those whom we find to be inhuman lacking the most basic respect for the lives of others do not deserve to be named along with their innocent victims. Alright. This one is quite a show. This is a really difficult one, okay? And in fact, even the, the sample, the sample, the answer key shows that the professor actually doubted if we could do this one, and while it was technically possible given what we knew, having to do it would have been an act in of itself. So let's see this schematization per se. Well, first we gotta do the schematizing of the main premises. Premise one. Not publishing the names of those engaged in mass murder or terrorist acts would protect innocent victims. Alright. Premise two, those who engage in mass murder or terrorist acts do not deserve to be named along with their innocent victims. P three is implicit. If P one and P two, then members of all media should refuse to state the names of those engaged in mass murder or terrorist attacks, acts. Now that we have these premises, let's get the conclusion. Members of all media should refuse to state the names of those engaged in all mass murder or terrorist acts. And while that seems simple enough, we need to support premise one and premise two because we can't just say we have all this evidence in the argument. So let's begin with sub premise one. The media could have referenced other mass murders or terrorist acts without naming the perpetrators. S P two, the public can get the killers' details without having to read the perpetrators' names. S P three is that, is an implicit sub premise. Those who engage in mass murder or terrorist acts are inhumane, as in they lack the most basic respect for other, for their life. S P four is if, S P one, S P two, and S P three, then those who engage in mass murder or terrorist acts do not deserve to be named along with their innocent victims. I would like to point out that this one is also implicit. I could insert, didn't I? Yes, I did. And then from here, we can get a sub conclusion. And thankfully, this one's easy. S C one is equal to those who engage in mass murder or terrorist acts do not deserve to be named along with their innocent victims, meaning premise two. Yes, yes. So now, let's get the next one, which is S P four. I mean, that's for S P five is not publishing the name of those engaged in mass murder or terrorist acts would protect the perpetrators' family members. Which I guess you could say is S P four because you're, by not naming them, the innocent victims also include the family members, but since it's phrased differently, I'm going to write it S P four. S P five, if it is S P four, then my apologies. S P six would be the perpetrators' family members are usually innocent victims. And thankfully, from here, we can get a pretty simple one, and that is that S C two is not publishing the names of those engaged in mass murder or terrorist acts would protect innocent victims, or P one. And that is problem set week two. I know I missed two of them, but the truth, okay, I missed three of them. The truth is, no, I only missed two, I missed two, I missed twelve and thirteen. If you know how to do this one, you can do the rest of them. I have absolute faith in you. Uh next, problem set three. He's going to release the answers to the homework tomorrow for homework four, so I'll do one actual final one, and then we can call it. Hold on. Oh no, he did release number four. Cool. I guess he just released it or something. You know what? I'll do problem set three and four as their own video, so I want to thank you all so much for watching, and I hope you pass your exams.